All right. Hey, good morning, everyone. Thank you for meeting us bright and early on a Monday morning. I know that you're all very busy people, so we appreciate you taking time to get together with us this morning to talk about an issue that's very important to the county commission, which is a focus on what we can do to expand early childhood education opportunities in Buncombe County. As I'm sure many of you may have read or heard, the county commission, at our last meeting in December, adopted a set of organizational priorities. And there's just six priorities, and one of the key priorities that we established was to ensure that we do all that we can to make sure all kids in Buncombe County receive early childhood education they need during the first critical 2,000 days of their lives. And the establishment of that priority, a lot of that has to do with the important feedback that we've received from many of the people in this room. And we've been working with many partners to take steps in that direction over the last couple of years, but we know we haven't already done it. So we wanted to get together today to share some information about what the county is up to, why we see this as a priority, but we know that many of the folks in this room work on this issue every day, from a professional or academic standpoint. So we really are here to learn from you about what we can do to help achieve this important and ambitious goal. So thank you for being here. Thank you all the county commissioners who are with us this morning. Commissioner Ellen Frost will also be joining us in just a few minutes. She's on the way. And I want to turn it over to Commissioner Jethan Beach-Furari to say a few more words about what we're hoping to accomplish today. Jethan.
Good morning, everybody. It's great to be here with you all. In addition to thanking everyone for being here, I just want to take a moment to thank fellow commissioners. Commissioner Presley and I have had the great honor in the past year of really getting to do a lot of work in this area, and there's been nothing but support and great ideas from other folks and commissioners around that. So I hope you all know that this is something that we take very seriously as a priority. Our conversation today really builds on a series of public conversations we've been having in the last year to better understand the landscape that we're in. Those conversations have appropriately been driven by experts in the field, those who have been doing this work for decades and who do it each and every day and understand best of all what it would take for us to significantly expand access to early childhood education, specifically at the three- and four-year-old level. So I want to give absolute deference to that expertise. And today's conversation I really see as another building block in understanding what's happening right now, but also imagining together what's possible. We've known from the very start that if we are to significantly expand access to preschool and pre-K, high-quality preschool and pre-K, it was not going to be a one-off project that involved just a few organizations and entities. It was going to be a community-wide commitment, the scale of which we hadn't seen here previously, and one that would require significant investment from local governments, from school systems, from providers, from the business community, and from the higher education community. Really, a diverse group of stakeholders looking at how we can come together to begin to change the story that's been true in Buncombe for a long time, which is that we know one in four of our kids live in poverty, about that number of kids don't have enough food each day. When a child starts their life in that way, we know the kinds of things that they are likely to experience. And if we're seriously committed to changing that, and we're nothing but that serious commitment from folks, we also know that expanding access to preschool and pre-K is one of the most positive impactful steps that we can take. So today's conversation is about diving into an issue that's been there from the start as we've been looking at what it would involve to scale this up, which is how do we help recruit and support and retain and respectfully compensate the teachers, the educators, who will staff these classrooms and programs as they're built out? And that conversation naturally needs to include our partners in higher education. There's been a lot of exciting work done locally on that question, and it's one I know many folks have been working on again for decades. One thing that motivates and excites me, thinking about this on the policy level and on the way the county can be the best partner possible in this work, is that there's incredible opportunities for innovation, for creativity, for ideas that may be a bit outside the box. Communities all over the country are wrestling with exactly this question. And there is a model, models emerging around the country. Many of you probably saw the New York Times, Sunday Magazine cover about exactly this issue last week. But what excites me is that we have the opportunity to create a Buncombe model that's really built around the incredible strengths that we have here in our community and the specific characteristics that we have here today. So thank you all for sharing your time to be with us this morning, but thank you beyond that for the work you do every single day on these important issues. We're very excited and honored to be partnering with you. Turn things over now to Rachel Nygaard.
Good morning, and thank you for that introduction. My name is Rachel Nygaard, and I work here at Buncombe County as the Director of Strategic Partnerships. And I'm honored and excited to have the opportunity to work with the public in this room to continue this conversation. And today's session is a call to action. So we have, like Commissioner Beach-Furari mentioned, been having this conversation at a long length for a long time, and it's been gaining momentum. And in our September work session that the board commissioners held on this topic, we identified workforce as a major barrier within the system. And so today's session is specifically focused on those workforce elements of the issue. And we want to be as tangible and action-oriented and specific as we can in our discussion. But to begin, I do want to acknowledge the leadership of the board commissioners, of the members of higher education. We really appreciate the representatives of the colleges and universities putting this into your schedule this morning. I have a list of who they are, but we've got Western Carolina University, Warren Wilson, there's a representative from Warren Wilson College who's on her way, University of North Carolina, U N C A. Marcell University will be here, we're with Lenora Rhine University, Blue Ridge Community College, the AB Tech, and the ASU. So very much appreciate the commitment from each of these schools to being part of the conversation. And also here to share regrets from the members of the legislative delegation, the General Assembly members, or double-booked, triple-booked, they're in a broadband session this morning. And their lack of being here is certainly not indicative of their lack of commitment or interest in the topic. So one thing that we'll do during the conversation is make note of things that we want to carry forward to the General Assembly that might come out as next up to this discussion. So I will do an overview of the issue to cover some of the background, the where we come from. We will have an opportunity to hear from some providers. We've got a room full of providers, and we've asked three providers representing public, private, Head Start settings to share with us that provider perspective. So Dawn Meskel, the Principal of Ashwell City Schools, preschool. Jackie Pennick from Burner Center for Early Learning. And Brian Repas from Community Action Opportunities. Head Start will be on the agenda a little bit later to share about that provider side, what they're feeling in terms of recruitment and retention and development and compensation of teachers in early childhood education. We will have the opportunity for remarks from the college and university representatives and commissioners. And finally, a facilitated discussion, and that is the piece of the agenda that we've given the most time. You'll see post-it notes around the room. And we invite people to make a note as the presentation happens and throughout the conversation of briefings. So if you think of a question that you'd like to address during this conversation or later, write "question" at the top of your post-it note and make a note of your question. Same with comments. We'll go around and kind of pick those up and make sure that they either get addressed today or sit in a parking lot to revisit. And finally, what we really want to hear is those ideas. We've captured a few ideas so far that we've heard from listening and from being in conversation with partners, but if you think of something tangible, short-term, maybe long-term, that we can do from our various roles and perspectives to get at solutions related to workforce issues in early childhood education, make a note. And then we'll have time during the discussion to talk about those ideas. What is this? What would it take to make it happen? How do we move it forward? So question, comment, idea. Before we begin with background, I wanted to mention some semantics. We talk about this field using a lot of different words. I, today, am going to use the phrase "early childhood education." We really are talking about birth through kindergarten, childcare, early care and education, preschool, pre-K. There are a lot of different elements of this depending on whether it's all day, all year, what age group is being served, what funding source is being pulled in. So I'm going to broadly talk about early childhood education, knowing that pre-K is an area of special interest in the physics. We get to revisit what it is and why it matters. Pre-K has been proven to have results, and access to early childhood education in general allows families to access the workforce. Those parents can work, knowing that their children are in a safe and development-friendly positive environment during the day, and it has benefits, early childhood education for the students, for those children being served intellectually, developmentally, socially, while they're being served and as they enter school, ready to succeed. And in their future, children who've been through a high-quality preschool program have proven to have higher math scores, higher reading scores, better attainment to play. And studies point to the economic returns for at the community-level for these kinds of investments. But it's complicated. We know that it's a good thing, but we have a lot of barriers that we face within this sort of fragile and complex system. We've talked a lot about availability and affordability barriers. There isn't enough childcare to go around. Centers maintain long wait lists, and the care that's available isn't always affordable. Affordable for the family to have the care, affordable for the provider who's trying to maintain this business model and meet all of their expenses. And if a family can find care that is affordable, that doesn't always mean it's the right care for the situation that their family has. They may be dealing with trauma or special medical, demographic preferences. I don't need to tell anyone in this room that the funding within early childhood education is complex and it's limited. There's funding from the federal level, state level, local level, private providers and funders, and grants. And all of this goes together to create a workforce that we're looking to develop. Chairman Newman, Director of Strategic Priorities that Buncombe County has placed. We selected, as a county, six priorities that this county commissioner wants to focus on as a frame to support their overall sustainability goals in the community. Early childhood education has come slower as one of those priorities. A copy of the issue brief, Plan for Early Childhood Education, is made available in the materials out in the hallway. But what I wanted to bring forward from that is the goal specific to workforce. We envision a community in which every child has an equal opportunity to thrive in the first 2,000 days. And in order to achieve that vision, we need a few things to be in place. And one of those, our focus of our session today, is that career track, that robust career track, where people can enter the field as substitute teachers. They can go through the stages of development, have people who have associate's degrees, bachelor's degrees, master's degrees, years of education, and opportunities to recruit and draw to this field and retain people who work in the field. The board has done a lot over the last year. 108 new slots were funded through these partnerships, the Johnston Elementary School, new Head Start classroom, partnering with the Ida for expansion, and Christine Avery Learning Center for a new classroom. All of this leveraging NC pre-K, which is a funding source for preschool, to make the sort of county and state dollars go further. The most recent investment was the Lonnie D. Burton Child Development Center. And one of the things that struck members of the board who wanted to add this call to action is that we weren't able to get that classroom open this spring because of a lack of ability to recruit a teacher. That doesn't mean we won't come back and revisit it on the next cycle. Brian can speak to that a little bit during the provider perspective or during the question and answer session later. So because the issue is so complex, it's not one of those things that just money can Want to give a nod to the momentum that has been happening, the conversation here and across the state and country. The, there's a picture of the Nashville-Buncombe Preschool Planning Collaborative, report on preschool expansion, which came out last fall. That was presented to the board commissioners during that September work session. And that was the culmination of many years of work and many different work groups within that, including one on workforce. And that work continues to figure out how to operationalize and implement that expansion. Kidnomics is a set of forums that are being held by the Institute of Emerging Issues with the state, which also held a jury duty in the state and commission that Commissioner Beach-Furari participated in. We've got organizations here, like Buncombe Partnership for Children, like Southwest Child Development Commission. We've got groups of organizations, like the W N C Early Childhood Collaborative, that are working on solutions to barriers. We have these state firms that put together toolkits and summits and forums, like the Institute for Emerging Issues, like the Early Childhood Foundation. And at the national level, there's a picture of the article that came out from the New York Times, which we have in our reference links. If you haven't read it, it's a good read. It must have hit my inbox a dozen times in a couple of weeks since it came out. It's very poignant. It's hard to talk about workforce without talking about quality. So quick primer, North Carolina uses a star rating system for childcare. It's a point-based scoring system based on program standards and staff education. And so program standards might be things like classroom size, teacher ratios, operational policies, and then the staff education speaks to credentialing degrees, but also coursework and experience. And this system has been in place for about 20 years. So the government also defines quality through funding sources. North Carolina pre-K is considered in many ways the world standard for quality within preschool settings. And there are, Head Start is another that has very high quality standards, that's funded by the federal government, that have similar kinds of programs and staff education standards that are specific to those programs. It was the North Carolina pre-K standards that were in place, in addition to the Head Start standards in that Lonnie D. Burton classroom and recruiting for, leaving the center specifically in that case, I think, somebody with a birth to kindergarten four-year degree, with a lead teacher. And if it's hard to talk about workforce without talking about quality, it's hard to talk about quality without talking about cost. Quality is tied to cost. It's very expensive to meet those standards. I see heads nodding of a lot of providers in the room. And the teacher ratios and the requirements for staff. The subsidized childcare program, there's a handout on that out in the hallway, the reimbursement rate, the market rates, haven't kept pace with the costs, and the rates are not consistent across the state. A major driver of cost is personnel. It's those teachers. Providers are challenged finding qualified teachers, finding people who, schools are challenged finding people who want to enter the field. I had a brief conversation with one of the education, with the university before the session started, saying, we used to, we did used to have a program, and it was hard keeping students in the program. So what is that that's keeping people from entering the field? What is it that's keeping people from advancing in the field? We know that wages are a big part of that. Well, wages may get hard to root for. As a result, there are limited opportunities locally in higher education for people to enter the field. I'm going to pass to Jackie, Brian, and Dawn to share a little bit from the provider perspective. We'll have a chance for remarks, and then we'll start having the conversation.
Okay. So the first thing that I want to do is thank everybody for coming in, especially thank the commissioners for having us all together. It's been sort of a dream of mine for many, many years. The second thing that I want to say to all of the representatives from higher ed, my first part is higher ed challenges. This is based on our challenges, not your challenges for providing what we need. So it's not an innocent criticism at all, just kind of what it is. The last thing is, I have found that over the years, my best solutions come from thinking outside of the box, so we are going to have to do that today. So the first thing is enrollment in teacher education programs throughout the state are down by 30%. That's not just for birth to kindergarten, but the whole field. Secondly, question is, the birth of the kindergarten degree outdated? Does it need to be reviewed in light of our focus on a state in birth through third grade? And that we know that the continuum of early childhood is truly birth through eight years of age. We might need to review that degree itself. But while we have it, we need to train people in it. There are very limited opportunities in this area for someone to get a birth to kindergarten four-year degree. In fact, in Buncombe County, there are none. The closest college is Western Carolina, and the next closest is Appalachian. Many of the people who desire this degree are currently working. It makes it a hardship and sometimes impossible to be able to be onsite, if it's not all online, for them to go to Western and certainly to Appalachian. We did have a VK program at U N C A for a few years. E T S U had an early childhood cohort here in Buncombe County for one year. You can tell how old I am, in the seventies. It's a layer of seventies, though. Marcell, now university, actually developed a preschool program, a degree program, but when the federal money went away, so did we. Let's see. Then I wanted to talk about the college grads in the birth to kindergarten programs that enter, that aren't currently working and want to advance, but are graduates from high school and then go for that degree. Oftentimes, after they get the degree, they go back home to work, and jobs are plentiful if they live in North Carolina. Or they may want to stay in the center or program where they got their degree, did their practicum, did their internship, and are knowledgeable about those centers. That leaves Buncombe County out of that. Then let's talk a little bit about the local availability of early childhood-focused programs. We have several in Western North Carolina that are available to our students. We need to make sure they're rigorous and of the highest quality so that we're training people either in certificate programs or in AA degrees that are highly skilled and can give us what we need. The cost for community college for many of us is quite reasonable, but for many of those that are on the lower end of the pay spectrum, it can still be a deterrent. It's something that we need to take a look at. It's also, teach is a state program that helps people go to school. It helps offset the cost. But with teach, your center that you work in has to provide you bonuses at different levels and also time out as a classroom to study. Both of those things are barriers when you're struggling to have people to teach children in a classroom and you have very little subs, which is also a challenge. I think one of the real challenges is accessibility. If you are working in the daytime, it's very difficult to get out, to go to classes. Classes being online help a great deal with that, but it still can be a struggle to only have what you need, perhaps happening in the day. I think the other thing that we've dealt with the most is if somebody needs a certain class and it's not offered that term, it may not be offered for two terms. And so what happens is you either have to delay being hired because you don't have a credential, or you delay getting a raise. The impact on centers is we can't get people as soon and quickly as we need them to fill a vacancy or to expand or to meet standards that we're held to. So that's the end of my part.
So I'm going to talk a little bit about the teacher support challenges that we face. I will say that it's important to note that these are challenges we face, and they look very different for our three centers, even though we represent public, private, and Head Start. We are in larger centers, so for smaller centers, these issues are tenfold. First, the lack of a career pipeline for early educators. We've talked a little bit about that already this morning. We have high school programs. We have a strong community college representation, and then we have our universities in the surrounding area, but we're looking for that pipeline to kind of help people get through all of those programs and then come into our centers. A piece that is really probably more relevant to those of us providing NC pre-K, and I think there's a lot of centers out there who would like to provide NC pre-K that can't because of some of these barriers, is this North Carolina educator effectiveness system. It's not a bad system at all, it's just difficult when you're, for a public school, it's embedded in our program. It's part of what we do. But for those community providers that also want to hire licensed teachers, they have to use the Early Educator Support, Licenseur, and Professional Development Program to do this. And that is an underfunded program that results in delays in getting teacher support. I think teachers have faced licensure delays because of that program being unfunded, underfunded, not unfunded. So while we're all kind of held to that same standard, it looks different depending on which agency you work for. Another piece is the professional development requirements versus what we feel like our teachers need. And so, again, I don't know that anyone, Jackie or Brian, can correct me, would argue with the heart and the spirit of the requirements that we have from D C D E E and little teacher licensure programs, but it's a lot. And so right now, this year, we're required to provide 20 hours of first solutions training, which is really your basics, your bloodborne pathogens, your safe environment, things like that. And we wouldn't argue that they're not important. And then also 22 hours of North Carolina Foundations for Early Learning training. So that's 42 hours of training we're required to provide our staff. We all agree it's important, but we're not provided for the time or the funding to do that. The two of them are provided for free, but the time to do them is hard to come by. And a point that Jackie made when we were talking earlier is for subsidy, if you close for more than 15 days a year, you're penalized. So we're kind of penalized for trying to provide the time to provide these trainings in addition to holidays and all the snow days we just had. We also have a new requirement that all staff or CPR trained. Again, not something we would argue with, but we have to fund that or require our staff to pay for it. Sorry, I'm getting a cold. The other piece to this that I find is a barrier, and I imagine other folks view as well, is that if you have a substitute in a classroom or in a center, not just a classroom, in your center, so my center, one of my centers has seven classrooms, if a sub is there for more than 10 days, they have to have all the same trainings. So it's hard enough to find people to get substitutes and then add for two hours of training to their plate. And then the last piece, I think, for the professional development, is that we all want to respond to the needs of our children and our staff. And so there's And so there are some pieces, I think Brian's going to talk about caregiver well-being and what we know is best for kids and what our population that we're serving might need, but we have a hard time finding the time to provide that training when we need to provide all of these other things without that time. A quick anecdote that I'll give too, we're talking a lot about teacher, but in terms of workforce administrative needs too for centers is lacking. Jackie also mentioned the difficulty finding qualified center managers. We recently had a staff member who has a master's in birth and kindergarten education, 20 years of experience, and taught a course that she was required to take that very course she taught to get her admin fee. So, and she would be the only one I could see, you guys shaking your heads.
Yes.
Sometimes I think there's a few things we can change to make things easier.
As we mentioned and talked about, you know, what we're going to need is a robust pipeline of employees all the way from high school graduates with one community college class all the way up to bachelor and master level degrees to get to the quality that we want for our childcare centers. The thing is, is we are, for NC pre-K and Headstart, we're competing with the school systems for licensed professionals, and that makes it challenging for us because there's not many, not only are we competing for the school systems, but we're competing for a smaller slice of the licensing workforce. So with the BK degree, there's less people going into teaching, less people going into pre-K even, and so we're competing them for that. This week, and what I'll talk about a little bit is our personal experience that we had this fall. We've had three teaching vacancies this fall. We interviewed seven potential employees and made offers to six of those, and we had one person accept. Two people didn't accept, and it's one of my biggest pet peeves at this point, is these were retired teachers with 20 and 30 years' experience and early elementary ed licenses, and they would have had to gone back to college and taken early childhood education classes in order to qualify for an exception to get their BK license. And the challenge with that is, we have the programs in place to support those teachers in the classroom. So there is a big difference between elementary education and early childhood education, but we have some things in place, we have processes in place to help support those teachers make that transition. And so I think that's one of, like I said, one of the things that I've noticed is, we have folks who wanted to work for us, who were willing to take our salaries, but when it came down to them actually having to go back to school after retiring, they were really not interested in that. Two, turned us down, actually good work for the school system, so that's not the worst thing, but certainly doesn't help us any. And then...
I don't know.
Then one turned us down. The other thing I would say is that when a good work for the school system is also related to salaries, and they wanted to turn the slide down for salaries. And the challenge that I have with that is, we pay better than most childcare centers, and I can probably confidently say we pay better than most private childcare centers and pay better than most providers in the town, and we have a hard time hiring. And so I think that's indicative of the challenge that the industry has as a whole. Our teacher assistants, we're at $12 an hour for those folks. For our qualified teachers with a license, we're at 1,863 as a beginning salary. Our average teacher salary is about $20.50. So what I hope and what we strive for is to, first of all, is to be able to hire experienced people with those degrees, but we also work to develop that pipeline within ourselves. And that's one of the things that I think Headstart's doing great. We have parents who come in and start volunteering in our classrooms, they can become substitutes for us. Once they become a sub, we have an education program that will help them go back to school and they become a teacher assistant. From a teacher assistant, they can work their way into being licensed, you know, get a four-year degree and then get their license. And so, you know, the challenge that I've seen over the, since I've been here, we've probably had maybe three or four employees that have done that whole process. So it's exciting to see what happens, but it's not a daily occurrence. One of the other things that I want to talk about is that as every industry and employer and family, you know, we do have a challenge with low salaries and challenges with benefits compared to the cost of living in Buncombe County, and that I think really does impact us probably more so because of our tend to be lower salaries. Dawn touched on our teacher licensure and qualification barriers, and I've talked a little bit about those, but the real challenge is, that I see is that early childhood education is really, it's a complex regulatory environment, and you don't think of people who are just taking care of children and educating children as having to deal with that. But not only the administrators and center directors, but the teachers deal with a very complex regulatory environment every day, and that's from keeping children safe to doing high-quality education through our curriculums and then through our child outcomes data, which is our sort of, is how we measure child progress and then report that to the families, to our program and to the community. So I think the other issue that we have, certainly the substitute pool is a real challenge, is that making sure we have that pipeline of folks coming in. And then, the other thing that's really important to talk about is, I'm sure any caregiver employment, this is critical. But what we see within our teachers and staff, you know, is a real caring and love for the children. They love their jobs, they love what they do, but they also tend to have real challenges. What we're finding is that our employees have high ACE scores, which impact how, you know, their future health. And then just that balance of all the rules and regulations in the classrooms and having to balance that with wanting to have the best outcomes for children and families. And that's the, sort of, the last thing I'll say is that, you know, we always talk about students and, you know, and children, but you can't separate that from families. And that's something that early childhood does so well, is we're interacting with those families on a daily basis, and we have the opportunity to do that future guidance and support with their children's education. And I think that's one of the benefits of the high-quality early childhood education that that brings, and that's the reason we're all here to talk about it. So thank you.
Brian, can you just please say what ACE scoring is anyway?
Yeah, I'm sorry to use that. It's the adverse...
Trauma.
...how that your needs is, and it's...
Trauma.
It's about how your trauma in your early years impacts your health later in your life. And there's a lot of research and data going on, a lot of support popular around those issues.
One thing I'll add real quick to what Brian was saying about salaries is that while the public school is probably one of the better compensating programs in the area, we, North Carolina's still 41st in the nation for teacher pay, and that's the pay that we're offering. And so while they're competitive for sure, just in general, that low pay across the state coupled with the high cost of living in Buncombe County, to me, makes that more, even more of a dire situation.
Nationally, where do the non-certified teaching assistants, where do they lay? Have that ever been in North Carolina?
It's never been looked at. It's a low salary for sure. Most of my teaching assistants, and again, I probably, are the best, I'm the best compensated agency, and they qualify for public benefits most of the time.
Well, Buncombe County schools, well...
We know that very well, don't we?
I just wanted to add just a couple additional challenges real quickly, and to reiterate that even though we're tiered in the amount of money that we have to work with, our support for various services, the vast majority of programs in this county are much smaller programs, and they, oh, okay, sorry, and they don't have the resources we have. And so to try to get people out of classrooms for additional training, to provide professional development when there's not much money, I know even one of the larger centers in our town had to hire a staff person just to manage the childcare voucher system and the requirements of funding agencies. It's an extreme burden on the smaller centers. And then just to reiterate real quickly what Brian and Dawn said, that this, I don't have to tell you, the salaries in Buncombe are depressed, not just in our field, but across the board, and yet, the cost of doing business, the cost of living here, is not depressed. And it mirrors, if not exceeds, the other metropolitan areas. So there's a big gap between what parents here can afford to pay for high-quality early care and education and what the costs are. So what happens? How do we do, how do we fill that gap? Centers close, which has happened, we don't expand, we focus on the area where we get reimbursed the most, which is three- to five-year-olds, especially the NC pre-K the year before school. What that means is that we have an extreme shortage of places for infants and toddlers to be served, and those parents need to work as much as anybody else if they are in the workforce, and infants and toddlers need a very enriching environment more than any other aged child. So the results are long waiting list, and the gap is often made up where our expense is the highest, and that's personnel. And thus, we have the low wages. I could talk a whole hour and a half about subsidy, but I won't. Childcare subsidy reimbursement rates, as I hope everyone knows, are low in Buncombe County. They are the lowest of any other metropolitan area by far, but I am excited to say, after 10 or 15 years of work, we have finally gotten a green light from the Division of Child Development, Early Childhood, to, we have a subcommittee, to look at alternative methodology, to try to... To try to make the reimbursement rates more equitable. Well, we're going to do our honest comment. That can take two to five years because of the way the pipeline works, and we have a crisis right now, so that's what we need to talk about. Did mention administrators, there's a shortage. This is the most stressful time I have ever experienced to be an administrator in early childhood, and so the skill level that is needed for administrators is the highest it's ever been, and our training is very limited, so that's another area that we need to look at. Thank you very much. And Rachel?
And before we begin the next session of our discussion, just want to welcome Representative Susan Fisher. We're so glad to have you with us, and of course, Helen Ross, who mentioned you'd be here as well. Great to have all of you, all of you in this room.
I'm going to send a sign and sheet around the room. Please write your doctor name on there before we leave today. We have begun to get questions. There are posts left around the room. You may write a question, comment, or idea, and we'll run around and collect those. Before we go to our questions, we've had four arrivals from our higher education groups. Would you like to introduce yourself and go around the sort of higher education and boards commissioner table, and then if there's anyone that among this table that wants to make a remark before it goes into questions and answers, and the idea of bringing someone in to do that?
I'm the director of the Director of External Relations.
My name is Meredith Woodfield, and I'm the Director of External Relations.
I'm Jeff Coles, the VHS Social Sciences at UNC Asheville, and the Department of Education Policy and Social Sciences at UNC Asheville. I'm training as an economist of the simultaneous aid of a service that is both too expensive and undervalued.
Dan Huncher, President, Marshall University.
You're going to skip the higher education? I mean, I'm the Buncombe County...
Kramer, Ricky Ashwell-Tamer, and I'm not supposed to be sitting here.
We have got a lot of low-cost and represented and more unfortunate education system providers in the class for everyone.
Yes.
Mike Farah.
Robert Presley, County Commissioner.
Justin Richer, County Commissioner.
Brownie Newell, County Commissioner.
Joe Bell, just sit down.
I don't know how a white side is county commissioner.
Alan Pross, County Commissioner.
Susan Fisher, District 114, North Carolina House.
Beth Stewart, Vice President of Instruction, AB Tech.
Jennifer Bosworth, Chair of Early Childhood Education at AB Tech.
Brenda Blackburn, Dean of Business and Service Careers at Blue Ridge Community College and an early childhood instructor.
Kathy Alley, Vice President for Instruction at Blue Ridge Community College.
Jamie Conrad, the Coordinator of Experienceful Learning and Outreach for 101.
Before we move into questions, is there any remark? I love your concise summary.
It is complicated. A couple of things just for the previous talk, and then some of the questions that there's a couple of energy initiatives in the state that are pretty exciting, and my colleagues from the community college and corporate institutions that have been here have noted, there's going to be an articulation agreement that all early childhood students who are in community colleges are bringing in 60 hours into four-year institutions, which should have hopefully fast-tracked those students, make it easier to get a four-year degree. And I was going to ask, do you guys want to add anything to that?
It's going to be great. And the West was well-represented in the planning of this articulation agreement. Both Kathy and I were on that planning committee, so we had hands-on with what was going on, the decisions that were made. It was a great experience for us because it was an opportunity for us to come together and make this decision ourselves, rather than in some states, I believe Florida and Texas, in fact, they were told their legislature did something similar to what ours did and said, here, you must do this articulation agreement, and here's what it's going to look like. Instead, North Carolina said, you're going to do this, y'all figure it out, and they gave us deadlines, so...
Is it specific to AB Tech?
It's specific to across the state. All 58 community colleges and the 12 universities that offer BK programs. So it's a relatively amazing program, and I believe, Brenda, you said earlier that we've been working on it on our end.
For 10 years.
For 10 years.
More than that.
Okay, Kathy, I...
Kathy's been on for 20.
Yeah, and it'll be in place starting this fall.
And the second thing I just wanted to mention was, I'm sure that some of you in the room know, who are in early childhood, that licensing is getting ready to change to the state, and no one is quite sure how that is going to happen, but we know that it will. It looks, it looked like from the beginning stages, it was going to be a part of Group Three license, I think, that they have backed off of that. I told them now, not pre-K Group Three, but nothing was set, but they did consider that that. At Western, we've been meeting with our elementary ed colleagues to figure out how we can live together better and make it easier, because I think, as Brian recap said, that when someone is an elementary ed teacher, they do try to go back to get some of that early childhood coursework, and that is not easy for our retired teacher. So I just wanted to mention those things. And then very quickly, is that we have an online, all online program for birth kindergarten, and are beginning to work on a master's degree, and I'll let Meredith talk a little bit about. I promise. Starting in fall 2018, one of the great things about tuition at Western, which would also affect the birth and kindergarten online program, is that the legislature put this program in place starting fall 2018. Our tuition is going to be $500 a semester for our students, and that is for our full-time student. So if there was someone who is using our online program and they were part-time, it would actually cost less than $500 a semester for someone. it would actually cost less than $500 a semester for someone to pay tuition for, for Western. So there's some affordable options that are within reach even here in Buncombe.
Want to start with some questions?
Hi. So last week, we heard from fire chiefs. And the commonality there that is overwhelming is that the legislature, and I, and that was one of my questions, whether it's just happened over the years, but the regulations and the licensing that fire chiefs have to do, it's not sustainable. It's simply not sustainable. So now, our firefighters are making nine dollars and twenty cents an hour. They don't have the equipment they need to be safe. And now, hearing this, the commonality, it's almost as if, if people in charge notice even something, they keep changing the goalposts. Once, one thing has been achieved, then they move it further. And it puts this bonus on the counties to pay, whether it be raising the wages for teacher assistance to be competitive. So they want to pay here, or firefighters. And we, that's a big element in the room. How do you come up with the best plan in the world, and then have someone have the ability to do the goalposts? So that's a frustrating question.
Is there anyone that can speak to the minimum requirements and, from the education, educational requirements from the General Assembly developed? Have they added more over the years?
Well, I think you gotta take, you gotta take it higher than the assembly. You gotta, you gotta take it, to the state and federal over time, so that's at twenty years. And this is absolutely, with the regulatory environment, is one that, we live in a litigious environment, where, I mean, where people, I mean, I just think of the school bus, everybody's heard the stories over and over, and that, that when I was a kid, it only took one look in the mirror, from a guy who scared me to death, where I just shut up. Now, it's just different. You know, that's when you, when you speak up as a teacher, or you're trying to do the best you can, you're, you're afraid, and it's... But that's very frustrating. I, I have the same frustration that Commissioner Frost has, and I think, you know, sometimes this, this is just overwhelming, really, when you're sitting there as a commissioner, and you have a heart for the lowest, lowest-paid people. And, and people don't have a heart for everybody else, but when you, when you hear the information about firefighters, and you hear the information about teacher assistance, and you know, you have an opportunity to do something, now that you really, you really want to do that. And then you do the math, and you go, you know, that, that's not always able to, you're not always able to do that in, in one session. So I think from a, from a legislative standpoint, I do thank, you know, Fisher for being here. I understand there was, a, that we're competing with Broadband today, is what I hear. I won't get into that, because, you know, I'll just say, this trumps the law, and that's all I see. But they're both very important today, education and for children, so we have to look at. But this becomes overwhelming as a, as a commissioner, because we're, we are not only charged to serve from our heart, but we're also charged to serve from our, from our head, and we have to fund it, so...
But, but there are states with heart better policies than we have.
Thank you for adding into the federal level, because that's in the...
Yeah, I think, and we deal with challenges at both, at both levels. And, you know, we actually have, you know, served on the, so, voting delegate for Association of County Commissioners in North Carolina. And that exists to keep the state and federal from pushing things down to, to us. Because it's ea, it's easy to do that. We were just, we are in charge of now, trying to figure out how to be part of the solution. So, Rachel, we want to do that.
Rachel, I'd like to make a comment here, because just recently, this weekend, I read something on the North Carolina Policy Watch, which is a project of the Justice Center, that really caught my eye. And I think it points out, and Jackie said something, my friend Jackie, it's so true, and I was working here at seven, so, it's so true, in that we've got to look at ways to come out of the box. And we also have got to have representatives like my friend Susan, who understands what needs to be done in the school system. But, but let me read something. We need to think about this, because, folks, this is serious. As taxpayers, we've got to step up to the plate. It's, let me quote, "North Carolina was once viewed as a shining example of progressive education policy in the South, with state leaders developing bipartisan support for public schools and implementing public, popular, effective programs over the past seven years. However, the state has lost its reputation for educational excellence due to a number of controversial partisan measures: rapidly expanding school choice, cutting school resources, and eliminating job protections for teachers. These poorly executed efforts have failed to deliver positive results for North Carolina students. According to a new report from the North Carolina Justice Center, in turn, performance in our schools has suffered, particularly for children of color and those from families with low incomes." Here is our problem, folks. We've got to step up to the plate. And we got to do it, you know, we can talk about Washington, which we know is broken, look at it. Raleigh is just as bad. But we've gonna have to take it on here in Buncombe County. We've got to survive, which is gonna have to be, we've got to do it. But unfortunately, though, as I had a conversation with Commissioner Bell, he was saying, we can't buy our way out of this. We've got to, our hands have got to come on deck, and we got to look at all ideas. And when I hear us talk about new, it would take two to five years to implement something, folks, that won't cut it. We're losing kids, we're losing. We're probably down two generations now and going. But we've got, and I'm glad to see here, that we're stepping up to the plate. But as citizens, we're gonna have to take some things that I had to make some corrections. If not, you'll be here ten years from now, and somebody will be talking about the same problems, and our poor kids will be just going, dropping through the cracks, is a lot of that.
I think it's a community issue. It's not just a government issue, you know? Because we've got employers who are hiring these parents who have children that are in childcare. And we were talking about fire chiefs, they've got fire department protection in those businesses. This has got to be a community issue. So what can we do to leverage those businesses? We've got Biltmore, we've got, and, and, these are just the two off the top of my head, Mission. These are two of our largest employers. Where are they? Because you guys can't do it all, you don't have all the money. The state can't do it all, we clearly aren't getting the money. It's a community issue. And we need community, public buy-in, so that these businesses will make investments in the things that matter, because if they don't, families will move away from this region because they can't afford to live here any longer as lifelong resident. That's really hard to hear. I couldn't afford to buy an own house again, quite honestly. You know, it's, it's a community issue, that we need community buy-in and business participation. I think, it, we need your help, too. We need your help as well, but it's a bigger picture. And until our community sees children as a priority, we're going to be stuck, because parents send their children to childcare sick, because if they don't go to work, they lose their job. So then, other children get sick, it's a vicious cycle. There isn't sick leave. It's, you know, it's just, all these things building on, we need that community investment, as well as local, state, and federal investments.
Rachel, I'll just say that this is, this is a conversation that we have been having for at least a decade or more. And Kit, you were saying, you were sitting there, you don't belong here. Oh, you actually do. Because I remember, when I first got into this, the chamber had a roundtable that talked specifically about early childhood education, and how we could address it through a, a public-private or a business-community sort of collaboration. And I think we've had sort of stops and starts at this for a long, long time, and we've done some really good things. The thing that I think, that I see, is that we have one or two friends in the General Assembly right now, who get the voucher problem, for example, or who get the articulation problem, for example, but they haven't gotten quite yet a handle on any of it. And we don't have enough momentum or enough physical energy in the, in the form of bodies in place at the General Assembly to make these things happen. And so, I, I hesitate to do this, but I will take it right down to the voting booth. If you, if you know people who are Republican, Democrat, independent, or unaffiliated, who have education as a high priority for themselves and for others, vote for them. If you, if there are people who are running for office, Republican, Democrat, unaffiliated or whatever, who don't have that as a high, a priority, don't vote for them. And I think that what you all are doing here by keeping this conversation going is one of the most important things you can do, because part of the problem is that everybody went to school, so everybody's an expert. Not everybody went to medical school, and not everybody's a doctor, so they're not an expert. So you don't hear a whole lot of, you know, talk about medicine down here at the General Assembly. But everybody went to school, so everybody knows everything. So what you have to do is just be louder. You have to be louder, and you have to be, you have to be consistent, and you have to keep it, keep that conversation going, which I really applaud you for doing. Keep the conversation going, and make sure that we have loudspeakers that go all the way to Raleigh, and, you know, wherever it needs to go. And I am so glad to be here today, for so many reasons, but thank you for letting me have a little bit of time here.
Rachel, can I ask a quick question? I'd love to hear a perspective of folks in higher ed at every level, first about some of the challenges to recruit, and the attention. Can you all talk to us about what happens when it works? What are the conditions that exist when folks are drawn to the field and are able to enter the pipeline and progress along the pipelines? So do you feel that, and some of the things that perhaps can be replicated, or that we can build upon?
Well, if I might attempt to address the point. Spent almost thirty years in K-12, in Evans, Marshall, and Swinney, in the teacheria up there. Two side comments before I establish your question. I think that the training of the professionals, whether it be the pre-K or the K-12, the infrastructure is in, well, it's down with refinements, of course, rules keep changing, of course. But there's articulation between the community colleges and higher ed, holistically, public and private, public system, the private system. And then, individual campuses, Marshall specifically, have specific articulation agreements across a broad spectrum of programming, with AB Tech, Blue Ridge, and so others, and not just in education, in other fields as well. But the issue does come down to what are the incentives for employers, the estimation, all of them, to value, to have an understanding of value to quality childcare for their employees. And then, there is also the issue of, you know, how can, how can we, as a general public, to, Commissioner Frost, that, you know, help those least able to, to afford it? And, you know, and so, the slots that are available in, in quality childcare, in pre-K, whether it be Buncombe or Madison, or, or any of the surrounding, the larger, the larger metro community. So, you know, the ability to do those programs and attract the personnel is all driven by living life, driven by life. And so, I was driving, and, and this comment I heard on the GPR about the volume, we have virtually fully booked. People want jobs, there's jobs. But, so many of them now are contract jobs. There are no benefits, there's no healthcare, there's no retirement incentive, so they are anxious, and they will obviously get a job to get there. So, you know, we, whether it's the university system, or, or Buncombe County Government, or Madison County Government, or Mission, you know, how do we structure ourselves with our employees, employees? And do we help them find an avenue to advance themselves? Less of these employees, employers now, will provide an incentive for their employees to advance their education. Now, there are some that still do with stipulations. In fact, in the dark ages, when I was a superintendent, we actually had resources to help people move from a bachelor's degree to a master's degree. And now, the state doesn't value a master's degree, train you like it wants to. Resources to fund that, by the way, for schools. So, it is about the education of a larger public, and the comment that behind me, I've heard a thousand times, if you went to school, and you're an expert. And we all did go med school, or nursing school, so we're not experts, and we're not, we don't all have these comments about CPAs. Because we all didn't go, you know, we all had their taxes done. So we take, and not to criticize that particular profession, but it's certain truth. And we went to school for just a little while, we know what the schooling is. I mean, that's kind of the mentality of the spirit, it's through these fifty years of work on. So, I'm sorry, I'm not giving you the hard, hard and fast, because there are no hard and fast, but it does come down to slots. It does come down to incentive for providers to have the programs that are high-quality. And that comes down to what you have to deliver the program with. And so, whether it's from employer, or, you know, childcare subsidies, a fifty percent of cost, or whatever it is, it makes a difference for people, being willing to step up. And it's certainly true, the point made by one of my colleagues, that they take their children to childcare when they're sick, because they're afraid to lose their child.
And teachers come to work sick because we don't have anybody to do the fostering for them. So everybody stays sick.
I think, to answer what you were asking about, I think, when it works, you end up with a very passionate teacher who will work for the pay that he or she can get. They will come and get those degrees, they will get more degrees, they will get more education, but then they move on. I'm a prime example of that. I came out of one field, I have a bachelor's in education of deaf children, I worked with children in public schools who were deaf and hard of hearing. Left that position, I had children of my own, and worked for one of our local providers, joined and got a master's degree and a teaching license, and taught NC pre-K for a number of years, when it was, we're at Ford, a long time ago. And then I moved on, because I could get higher pay outside of the classroom.
Do we have data on that question? I mean, in terms of the, you know, there's a lot of tension that we give to that, how do we recruit people to enter this profession, right? Which obviously means people enter, enter the pipeline, but equal importance, people not leaving the pipeline, right? And in some ways, maybe more important, because once you get people trained, and they've done this for a few years, they get really good at it, so they're your, you know, they're our most valuable employees. So keeping people in it is probably even more important than how we get more volume coming in. So do we have the data on how long folks, you know, make this their job, on average, and, you know, what we're looking to do to make that, make that longer?
I work for it more than I think that. Is there, what data is available about kind of entry and exits from the career path?
As far as turnover, I don't have that data on the top of my head.
As far as turnover, I don't have that data around off the top of my head. We do know that the lowest paid workers in our society are those that take care of us when we're young and those that take care of us regarding when we're old. So if we look at, not to antagonize the issues, but if we look at the long-term care challenges and CNAs, we could employ over five hundred CNAs today if we had facilities in our region and hospitals or long-term care facilities in other settings. You know, the economics of it is really tough, and that's why I'm here to try to glean some wisdom. Because y'all, you know, I think the chairman's point is well taken, that while, you know, we've got to focus on turnover because you train someone, they don't leave you. But, you know, it's a tight labor market now, and we have the tightest labor market in the state. You know, the challenge, macro challenge in our region, I don't know if there's an easy solution, but the top twenty sectors of our economy, there are only two sectors in our region that pay above the state average for that sector, and that's healthcare and hospitality and tourism. Every other sector pays less. And our biggest disparity is in our highest-paying sectors. So, you know, like IT or finance or other areas, you know, that's where actually the our wages are the lowest, even in manufacturing, our average manufacturing wage in our region's over fifty thousand dollars, but our manufacturing wages are below, you know, the state average. So that's, that's the macro challenge. You know, the good news is people want to live here, and, you know, hopefully have a really vibrant economy. We have about thirteen thousand job opens today, and they're not all low-paying jobs. We've got a lot of high-paying jobs that employers are struggling to fill. So when someone considers going to go to school and go into early childhood, well, you know, look at nursing, or look at engineering, or look at the other career opportunities they have. You know, over a lifetime, there'll be millions of dollars in the difference between their lifetime earnings if they choose to go into early childhood versus going into, you know, somebody's hired man, not hired man, high-paying areas. So I don't think I answered your question, chair.
We'll capture that as a data point, and then upcoming econoregory, that will look at some of the job sectors, some of the economics, and maybe some of the examples.
So I think for future thought, I don't want to leave, Ms. Paul, a comment about the, about the community. We have met often with some of the, the mission, whoever, that, that you said to fix this is going to be a community, we're going to be active in trying to find a solution, because we're just going to be reactive to all the other things, whether it be elections, whether it be national, whether it be states, whether it be, and if we go to a meeting and we come back and we're like, ah, you know, we've got to figure out how to fix this. But I went to the new YMCA in Campbell, but you know what they had? Childcare. They can figure it out. Some of these other people that you mentioned can figure it out. A company I used to work with figured it out.
But aren't they licensed?
They have like same requirement.
I don't know about all that, that's Chelsea.
And that's what I'm saying, those types of child years in places like YW, babysitting, are just simple babysitting and their staff don't have to have the training and qualifications. It does make a little difference.
But what my point is, is if they, it was part of their thought process to provide it. There are employers, and it is part of their thought process to do two things, part of their business model, do two things. One is to provide that ongoing education that Dr. Lunchford mentioned, say, our employer. And the other is to provide childcare, is to provide childcare. And I know it's, I know it's a different thing, but it's all part of the same conversation. What they're trying to do is provide opportunities for their parents and also to provide some, you know, some provision for those social children from the economics and.
If I could add P.S., excuse me, a P.S. to your comment about the Campbell Y, I might add a sense of, but I know why it's there. Just because two individuals in the Campbell community stepped up to play.
Sure did.
And they stepped up to play from Marcellum, the tag, commission hospital, called Carroll and Jack Burton.
They sure did.
They understand the issue of having those resources in the community. And so it is about getting the understanding and the education. The turnover rate, once upon a time, I don't know where Representative Fisher would be able to enhance what I'm going to say, the state of education tracks the turnover rate from every school system in the state of North Carolina. And whether they left North Carolina, or whether they left Bunkham, Bill Henderson, or vice versa. And, and at once upon a time, the western part of the state had the highest retention rate of K-12 educators. It was not plus ten years, but it was plus five, whereas the rest of the state had a much lower retention rate. And that has to go back to what Ms. Ramsey said in terms of people who want to live here and the environment and quality experiences. But it's still an enormous loss of resources to the chairman's point, when you train them and they're out the door, and, you know, in five years, that lost investment is phenomenal. But there is, there are points where you can get that data.
But to ask this question, there are states that do this very successfully, and I guess I'd like to know the difference with what they do compared to what North Carolina.
And a lot of the themes of the questions that have come our way is what's, what's in our, what can we do? What's this, what's within state control, what's within our local control? What are some ideas, knowing that we're also playing the long game and working on state advocacy, looking at kind of those larger systemic shifts at the policy level? What are some things that we can do here, now, to make a difference?
So I would respond to the higher ed question, what, what examples are out there? And I apologize for being late. I know I missed Jackie Penix talk, so I'll talk a little bit about the relationship that Warren Wilson has, I think as an anchor institution, really. To respond to this, we have a, a relationship with Burner Early Learning Center where our students are working at a highly effective facility. So they're co-educators with us, students that are in our coursework see that relationship there as a, as a really a way, a pathway into early childhood. And I think by professionalizing it in that way, we draw students into early childhood, students that maybe wouldn't consider it otherwise. And they also graduate with these, you know, very practiced, they've had opportunities in experiential setting beyond coursework that really make them effective in the classroom. Many of them stay at Burner. We still run into the same problem of the fewer financial incentives to stay in the, in the work. But I think in terms of drawing them into working in early childhood, being effective by having that co-educational relationship, they are really becoming the leaders in the field. And I also, I think for us as a, in higher education, we see it as our responsibility, really, as a sort of a lead anchor institution in the community to, to serve and work in that facility. So we have students on work crews anywhere between ten and fifteen in a semester working in Burner, and also internships. And people started a garden program close by the center that are Warren Wilson graduates. So I think that's a positive solution, is looking for anchor institutions that will partner in his work.
If I might add to that, that's the same thing I was thinking, is that I have a background in CTE, but then also in community college, and now at the university level. And that's the one thing that I think can answer your question the most, is how do we recruit? How do we retain? And I think it's exactly what Ms. Paul was, you know, alluding to, is that it takes a passion. And so if we don't develop that passion, these students are not going to come to us to begin with, and then we're not going to be able to continue through that process, to not only educate them, but to have that passion exist where they want to be in that field. When you talk about burnout, I cannot even imagine. I mean, I have a lens to point one after me, I can't imagine someone with a classroom full. And so I do think about, you know, if we don't have that passion that exists, then we know the pay's not there. And that's something that can be worked on, but it's not something that's going to be changed overnight. So I think one of the things that we've not mentioned, but I think is a really crucial part of this, is going back to even the CTE classrooms, where the early childhood education programs can exist to develop that passion that brings them, that pipeline. It's developing that pipeline, as you were saying, and where does that pipeline begin? As early as possible. We've got to get students to develop a passion so that when they, you know, think about early childhood education, they're not looking at the financial side. We'd like to say our students are not, we, we, we focus on them not being financially literate coming in, but I can guarantee by someone who's recruiting, that's one thing they do about financially is, you know, how much money will I make upon graduation? So when we cannot give them the numbers they're looking for, they're always asking us on something else. So I think that.
Can you educate us first that CTE stands for?
Career and Technical Education. It's at high school level. Our teaching high programs across the state have an early childhood education component to them. And we've just seen, I mean, I'm from Gadsden County, and I can tell you that in, in the county where I've worked for many, many years, that, that has been a crucial part of our early childhood education pipeline. It's just developing that love for CTE, you know, love in the CTE classroom. And it's something that they're not pursuing for the financial aspect of it, it's because they enjoy their day-to-day interactions with the school.
Yeah, and I'll, just for personal experience, reiterate that before I, in North Carolina, I lived in Tennessee, so when you talk about what other states can be successful. And at my daughter's first daycare that she attended, they actually had to develop partnership with the area high schools. And the high school students that was part of their curriculum, and they came in their last few years and actually worked with the children hands-on. And so they were developing the students at a very young age to get into the classroom and, and form those relationships. And since moving to North Carolina, and I live in, over in Jackson County, you know, that's something that I don't see happening, is the students being a classroom education. So I really think that you've got to start that as an early issue.
One of the things I'd like to comment on is, is just that within our model, we don't allow for that face-in or for that opportunity for hands-on experiential learning as much. And to Brian's point and to Jackie's point, we have to allow folks to be in the classroom and shadow and work and be with the children. But there are, within our model, which operates under the federal guidelines and then the state guidelines, that isn't allowed to be done because of requirements of the lead teacher, the assistant teacher backgrounds, all of those things. And I think we've missed an opportunity to work with folks that want to come back in from higher education but can't because of those extra requirements, that they're not willing to necessarily go back and go back to school again. So I would challenge everyone to look at the model that we operate under, are there opportunities to tweak that aspect of it and see where we, where we may be cutting our nose off despite our face in allowing people to gain their passion, shadow in the classroom, or come back in and work in early education, if that really is what they want to do.
But.
I like what you have to say, because when I was in that field, and that's a long time ago, we had the opportunity to go out and learn how big a town is, you know, the children's touch, I wish I had a lot of kids up there. That helped me in this career I served for. You're exactly right. Kids, the students in school, they can go, and if that gives them some determination, if they would like to do it or not, they're going, you know, and if they do, then that's, that's a high priority. And, you know, everybody that, like me, that worked as an apprentice, didn't go into that field, that tried a different field, whatever, but you can try two or three. We somehow legislation, Susan, we need to figure out how to do this for our kids to be able to do this. That's, that's. And Lisa, you go, you go all the way back to middle school. This, this, you know, and I know you've been to several other people that have been to the career days in, in middle school. And I remember, you know, Mason at, at my church, he was known for having out front his block lane demonstration where he was, I mean, where he was laying, laying brick. And I remember, you know, not, watch, watch me close with both sides of my mouth when I move. It is so important when we talk about paying, and I, and my passion is towards all of these low-paid positions. And, and it is because I believe they're doing the work, and they should get paid for it. I want them to stay in North Carolina, I don't want them to go somewhere else. But at the same time, not everything's about money. It, I mean, it, it's just, it's just not, some people just love it. And I think about the retired people, what drives me crazy is when you tell me there's five retired people that want to go back and help kids, who has raised more kids. I mean, we probably, it's amazing how many children they've influenced over maybe fifty or sixty or seventy years, and they can't go back and do it. That's a, that's a big issue from a legislative standpoint or wherever that we can, we need to try to fix. But if we can still get, we can start early and find those that love, mamas and daddies love children, their grandma and grandmas love children, they love them, and we can go back to the CTE model is a big deal in Bunkham County. We can go back and find those that love these children, and we can figure the rest out now, if we can get it, if we can do that. That's a, that'll be a big help.
But I think just to this point, it's important to know where leaders stand. It, it's great to love children, it's great to want to go into burning buildings, but until we value that, and whether it's right or wrong, it's right for a football player to get a good million dollars, but it's, that our values are skewed until we can align with elected votes who should be the leaders in this. It's never going to change because, and, and I love the YM, don't get me wrong, but we have to really be clear in the distinction of what the YW does for pre-K, for instance, and the YM. And I, I love both, but I think it's really important to make that distinction because what happens with the YM, they haven't had to go through hurdles that the YW has to go through. And, and I think it's all good, but I think it's really important to make it.
There's our opinion about it, it's the same.
And look, another question for our friends in higher education and training. For folks who've read that New York Times Magazine article, one of the models it referenced was an apprenticeship model that's being piloted in the Philadelphia area, bringing together, as I understand, community colleges, network of more than twenty local providers, a labor union, which is, you know, in a different way. But the model is, I understand sort of the thin, a thin layer of what it does, but it allows people who are currently employed in the field to become apprentices and through their daily work and mentorship in that sense, advance as they show up to work each day, basically. So just wondering if there's been thought about approaches like that, or if there's anything underway currently in the region that's looking at the apprenticeship model as, as one vehicle that might sort of, you know, we're, we're operating in a tightly restricted system that's broken in some ways and has a lot of limitations, but there are also, because you all are showing us each day, every day, there's cracks where there's room to run by working outside the box, et cetera, et cetera. So that was sort of one of our interests today, was giving, creating a space and giving lift. So what are some of those ideas where there might be some room to run, even in pilot levels locally, and figure out whether we might sort of learn enough to figure out some ways to work around the system while it continues to get things going? So circling back, we'd love to hear your thoughts and folks kind of chewing on that idea of whether there might be room for an apprenticeship model to fit into our local ecosystem.
I think there's currently some structure for that under the EESLPD, which is what our licensed teachers in non-public schools model. They have mentors and evaluators that support them. It's a really complicated system, and as these folks shared earlier, it's a complicated system and it's underfunded and there's not enough people. But there is some piece of that happening. I know at least on our side, we have, all of our classes require some interaction with children throughout the semester. It varies in form, sometimes it's just a single assignment, you go observe, some courses it's, you're going to do a number of observations, and then we top off the degree with our early childhood capstone practicum. And then that's where our students are placed for the semester for nine hours a week in a local program. Sometimes it's their employer, many times it's not, which is difficult if they're already employed, because then they have. it's not, which is difficult if they're already employed, because then they have to leave work and lose money. But we have that built into our programs. Part of the articulation agreement that we're working on will result in a further tweak of one of our courses, one of our most important courses, infants, toddlers, and twos, where that there will be a field work experience expected in that class. Whereas I think we've already, at least, we already do it, we already require it, but it's going to become more formal and be in the course description for all the colleges. So we already do some of that work now. Um, and, and kind of tied to that is our high schools. So Rachel handed me an idea of what the education options are for high schools. Some of our high schools locally, Irwin, Reynolds, Robinson, Asheville High, and Madison, that catches, AB Tech's catch and Marion, have childcare centers on site. They have teachers who teach early childhood courses, and they work in those classrooms and get that experience, that earlier experience of watching that walk face, and they get to be in the classroom. For, we've got, um, for other high school students, they can participate in a career in college promise, which is tuition-free for juniors, like sixteen and off, to come to AB Tech. And so we get a number of students that way. In fact, I have students that are in a high school that don't have an early childhood program. So we've got those pieces that they can come and get, and through that, they're in our courses, which means they have to go to observe children or interact with children in group care. So there's a number of options for high schools, although I liked what you said about what Tennessee does, and I added that to this idea, because now I've got three students at each of the semester who don't have an early childhood classroom on-site in their high school. So now I'm going to go find somewhere and then gather and partner, because I think that's a really great opportunity. And I know Henderson County has, y'all have childcare a couple of high schools.
Yeah. So, and even on our campus, um, we have a Head Start program there on campus, too, because we have an innovative high school on campus, as well as an early college on campus. So we also have that college career promise certificate that is in high school and also, um, and doing observations within the classrooms, and just the same with AB Tech. So we are doing a lot of that already, and that's kind of that CTE pipeline.
Right, yeah.
Where...
And you've built it all, it's all happening on your campus?
Yeah.
Huh. And so the early pipeline exists, I mean, you're co-located, and there's a lot of integration, that's really interesting.
It's already in existence.
Yeah.
Currently at AB Tech, there's, there's not.
There's none.
Look, we've got really strong partnerships. I've got students currently in Head Start classrooms, at Burner, at Alida, in their internships, in their catch and practice. So I also use local centers and have good relationships with a lot of local centers for experience.
I see you're like...
I just wanted to make a comment about, about local strategies. As we look for ways that Buckingham County can make, uh, changes or, or put new policies in place that will positively impact, one thing that might be important to think about is the evolution and the transitions that are currently occurring in the world of early childhood. When we first started the early childhood program in North Carolina, it started to be a support for low-income working parents. And in those first years, we centered all of our energy around access, non-traditional hours of care, what do we do with parents who work shift, and our focus was parents. As we evolved that program, we began to understand about brain architecture, and we decided that the quality of what happened to the child during the day is what was going to make workforce development and, and create the next workforce. And we centered on the education of the teacher who was with the child. With new regulations became, we became increasingly aware of the safety of young children. And we said, okay, these people who were taking care of our mama work, who were the educator, now they need to do CPR, they need to be able to do evacuation plans, and we have to do health and safety. And so for our providers, we are asking a tremendous amount from providers. So we have to look at, is there a way that during the transition of where we want our early childhood programs to be in the next few years, what can we do to support that transition so that those programs can get there? And I think there are some real innovative solutions around assisting with criminal background tech, assisting with temporary substitute, assisting with apprentice program, and many of those kinds of ways. But the recognition that the early childhood program itself has been under huge stress to respond to everything that we're now learning about young children. I think it's a great opportunity for Buckingham County to say, how can we help while, while the state works out a master plan for what we should do to go forward? I didn't mean to ramble so long.
Um, I would just like to say, um, that the things that I'm going to pledge to work on, um, in this, uh, between now and the next time we meet, or in the next session of the legislature, is to find, just as you said, ways for the state to help with things like wading through the whole voucher, um, morass. Um, I know that it, it's ridiculous that you have to hire someone, and you're a very low-scale childcare center, and you're having to hire somebody to wade through the voucher, uh, problem. We need to have some centrally located folks at, um, HHS, uh, DCD, I don't know all of them, to help at, from the state level, those local folks.
And then the other thing is that I want to, um, suggest that we look at incentives other than just an apprenticeship, which is awesome. I think apprenticeships are very important. But we need to look at incentives for pay for, um, for childcare providers. When you have a situation, that I heard Asheville City Pre-School talking about, where you pay your folks, but they still are eligible for, um, social services assistance, that's costing us more than it would cost for us to establish a decent rate of pay to begin with. So we need to, I know, I know money doesn't solve everything, but when you have someone who's coming out of an early childhood program, and they're looking to see how much they're going to be paid, and they see what they're going to be paid, you have to want to go there. When, when people are looking to bring new companies into, into areas, they develop these ridiculously impressive incentive packages. We need to look at an incentive package that comes from the county, from the city, from wherever, from the chamber, from, from, from public, private, wherever.
We did that.
To pay these childcare providers as they're coming out of, of, of their education programs to go into that business. And, um, you know, that will help all the way down the line from the people who, from the companies who went and located this area, when they see that we support, um, childcare in, not just in curriculum, but in pay for the providers, they're going to want to be here. That should be part of any planning that we do for bringing in new folks.
I love your action. Good. Awesome.
I love your self-pledge. My pledge to...
I wanted to mention one thing, Representative Fisher, this is, I want to add something to you there. Um, we, the decision earlier that reimbursement rates are amongst the lowest in the state for childcare subsidies here. I about popped a blood vessel last year when I learned that economic incentive tiers are used to help figure out what reimbursement looks like. And let me note, all right, so you've got, uh, if we're amongst the lowest, and we're tier three, which is the highest tier in Buckingham County, Haywood County, and that's, we're in the same tier with Raleigh and Charlotte, and some of the largest communities in the state. And Haywood County is also a tier three, whereas Greensboro is a tier two community. I mean, it makes absolutely no sense to me. So our lobbyist has been working with some legislators to try and, and eliminate the use of, of incentive tiers. Number one, the incentive tier system is just screwed up, period. But second, not only did I find out it was being used for economic, for, for subsidies, but it was being used to determine whether art museums, what kinds of, uh, what kinds of reimbursement or grants that they're capable, if they're in tier three, they're in the lowest rank. Whereas we, so it's a huge problem. We've been working on suggesting some changes to the economic incentive tiers in effort to, because forty percent of the people who work at Buckingham County come from outside the county. So we have to care about the whole, the whole MSA. We actually have a ten-county labor shed. So we have to care about that for everybody involved. So there are ancillary things that you may not think have anything to do with childcare, and yet they are, and they're impacting it in a huge way. So we look forward to reaching out to our legislators on that issue.
Give me your names.
Continuing the...
My list, like...
Can you name some partnership names?
Thank you. That, that is a huge issue. Um, and Sheila and Beth could speak more to this, but if you look at the rates that are currently paying reimbursement rates in Raleigh, and you compare those to Buckingham County, the difference per year in what Buckingham County is losing is five billion dollars. Let's see. Um, so just to address a couple of points that have gone up, brought up earlier. So retention rates, the turnover rate, um, in FY15, it was, uh, twelve percent across the state. Um, it rose to nineteen percent in FY16, but in Buckingham County, it's twenty-five percent.
In this field?
Yes, yeah, in, in early childhood. And those are the participants, that's only for the folks that are participating in wages that educational supplement cover. So what does that mean for folks that aren't even participating in that? And that gives you some sense. Um, so to try and think a little bit more creatively about what can happen at a local level, there's been some discussions between folks at AB Tech and Buckingham Partnership for Children's Staff, and we have some folks here who can give more detail to it, and we had opportunities, I think Jay, Jay stepped out, to really address a number of issues, looking at recruitment, retention, and ongoing professional development by creating a highly-qualified substitute pool, um, that involves some, some training, um, and then placement for folks. And that is a way for folks to really determine, hey, is this a career I want to take on? Um, and then get access to higher education through AB Tech, as well as work more closely with the high school program. Some folks have referenced the CTE program. So, um, Buckingham County Schools has some great programs, Asheville City Schools has one, um, in the Asheville City High. And so we've been working with those programs this year. I think there's a lot more that we could do there with those students to get access to higher ed through the, um, college career promise, and to get, um, some more support through the partnership for, for training, as well as for those folks who are in the field as, as young, uh, have just started in the field as early educators, to get, uh, ongoing individual coaching. So yes, it costs some money, we have a budget flushed out, but it's not an enormous amount of money. And it's a creative way to also work with creating opportunities who have identified that despite the four percent unemployment rate in the community that they directly serve, unemployment is thirty percent. Um, so anyway, this is a way to address all of those things, recruitment, professional development.
So I'll be hearing from Amy and that proof of, uh, providers are working on that model, I think. Jamie, can I, can I have a little bit of that free here, and then we'll be back to higher education?
Um, I just wanted to say, when you're talking, Jasmine, about different models and different pilot programs, I've thought of all sorts of different models that have happened successfully across the country, like, you know, and are actually happening here as well, like shared services, the Schulus program, or worker-owned co-ops, like in Philadelphia, so that the workers become the owners of the business. And in childcare, that has been a very successful model. So I think, you know, if we can think along those lines as well, so that not only just the same way it's been done, but...
Thank you.
Well, to build on, as soon as I'm here, we, we once had a BK program in the Seattle University, until it beat the soldiers, so it was more under K and P. And the reason why we no longer have a BK program is simply that there weren't enough students to hold in the program. And we had a cohort of four to five students a year. And when the faculty member who was directing the program took a job elsewhere, it's another rejection issue. When the faculty member took a job elsewhere, the university decided that we, it didn't make sense to continue a program like that. So the question really for us really is thinking about why, why couldn't we get students there? I don't, I don't think it was a question of, of igniting passion. Uh, it really was a question, I think, of compensation, I think. So we've got to find a way to make this an attractive, long-term career for folks, because, you know, getting a university degree is not an inexpensive conversation. And, but to compound that, I think we need to find a way to, um, to make this an attractive long-term career without increasing threat to families. So we can have this conundrum of people being a service that is simultaneously too expensive for the people who need it, and undervalued for the people who provide it. We've got to find a way to bridge that gap between the two things. Passion won't pay the rent if it didn't, if it didn't position it. And I also want to point out that, for me, since I, I'm not overseeing just the Department of Education, but we're thinking about the university more broadly, this is a workforce issue for us as well. And it's, we've had conversations as a university, mostly driven by faculty senate and the faculty welfare and development committee, I think, that has conversations with, or have the committee directly or non-adjecating.
Yeah.
About how can we provide, uh, not only childcare, but early childhood education for the children of our faculty and staff? Because it's an important issue, particularly right now as we're going through a generational transition in our education. I want to think about that some.
Dr. Jonas, I'm unsure if those had your hands up in the last couple of minutes.
So Jasmine asked about room to run. I think, that we have a strong, as I talked about, the Warren Wilson relationship, the lab school model of Burner. Uh, but hearing, you know, the, from community colleges, I think there's a, there's a possibility, I want to explore the possibility of a partnership with AB Tech, maybe an AB Tech, Warren Wilson, Burner relationship. Warren Wilson just rolled out this NC three tuition. Um, that will make higher ed, that four-year degree more accessible. And, but I think what we're lacking is some, some of the expertise from AB Tech and some of the licensure pieces, that I see some room to run there, the possibility that could be a win-win to, to draw more people into the field, to have a stronger relationship with community college, and to also offer this four-year degree pathway for students that are already in the program, and this amazing lab school relationship. So I, you know, Jackie, I don't know if this sounds even plausible, but I, I'd love to, that looks like a, a place to run for me, in, in terms of developing a special other pressure program.
It's, it's beneficial for everybody, because three of my students last spring were hired before the end of the semester to be employees of Burner.
Great.
So when they do their final capstone, they're getting hired if they're not already working. And some of, actually, one of them left and others sent her to work for Burner. You know, that's a setup. Most of my, those three students, only one of those changed jobs. The other two had not been employed. So they, that was a win-win. And I think that's a good...
Standing here, I've just had this magic point of seeing that people's dreams flying, and I hope you're working on your one or two or three things that were aha, that you'll be following up on at the, at the county staff level, we can certainly make a scale, compile, and share out this information. Any materials that we use during the session will be on the board commissioner's webpage for the meeting. Um, the one thing that's not on there yet is the PowerPoint presentation. We'll get that up later today. Um, and we will make these notes available. Please make sure you've signed the sign-in sheet, and if you haven't, leave me business cards so that we can stay in touch. So kind of summarizing our closing remarks, um, again, members of the board.
I think we need to really pursue AB Tech, because that, without that, the wheels are off the bus for us. And that's a no-brainer to pursue that.
I, I think one of the things we didn't really start with is the commission didn't just adopt strategies, but they really did, in the commission process, they had pulled funding out economically. call funding economic development and say this is a future workforce issue. So those concrete strategies, especially as you talked about, and I know our work you've done on the articulation agreement, what are going to, what are those concrete challenges for people moving from an associate degree to a four-year degree? I've heard substitute pool, I've heard stipends, from practicum, or S and R. The more we can get our handle arranged, our hands around those concrete things that we can do now while we wait for state national solution. I think that'll be really helpful in how how we do that follow-up. Because things like tuition assistance in exchange for work have been hugely successful for us in nursing fields and social work fields. So those are the kind of concrete things I think we need to talk about with the funds that have been allocated.
Yeah, just to, again, express a couple of thanks, folks, for sharing your time, your expertise and appreciation of my fellow commissioners and the county staff for an approach that's, I think, really been about trying to identify those actionable areas where we can take immediate steps, where we can be learning immediate lessons and in some ways sort of build the road by walking as we work with a longer-term vision of ultimately being able to ensure that every kiddo in our community has equal access to high-quality education. And beyond that, not just education, first off, everything they need to be able to drive. But we can't state enough the openness to hearing ideas. And I think that I've heard from everyone on commission, certainly a real recognition that we're going to have to try out a lot of different things. And so please don't hold back if you've got ideas. It doesn't mean we can act on all of them immediately, but we certainly want to hear them and figure out how the county can be an effective partner and continue forward. It was awesome to hear some concrete ideas kind of starting to bubble up and great questions about where those might go next. So I just personally want to say thank you to everyone.
I'd also like to say thanks to everyone for putting this together. This is very educational for me today and as being part of what Jasmine helped me with. And I whispered to her during this, this, this is butter deeper than I ever thought it would. A couple of notes that I made here. Jennifer, I mean, I just loved everything you said. I mean, it made such good sense of what the community gets. We can go to state, we can go county, we can go federal. But it's got to start. It's got to. We, you know, the YMCA, you know, who started it? The community started it. You know, I was fortunate enough to jump the elementary school over the death of the little girl, you know, a year and a half ago. That I took it on myself as a commissioner out there not to spend the taxpayer's money, went out and funded a playground. And the kids, whenever I went out there, and they say, this is absolutely the best day of my life. You know, you don't know what that means to me, that you hear that kind of thing. Susan, one thing you said there that means a whole lot. And you said, whenever you're voting, to look at the priority. That's exactly right. But as I ran the last time, that was every local, state, number-one priority. But it was like it fell off the boat after the election. And you said it's been going on 10 decades. I mean, not decade. But it was everyone's priority. And that is why I'm surprised that Jasmine and myself, and I mean, listen, I'm a smoker, of what she has done here. And once we leave here today, this don't need to roll over and, okay, whatever our next workshop is, bear priority. So I think as a commission, all seven of us voted unanimously that this is one of the three top priorities. And let's keep it going. And thank y'all very much.
You know, and what I'm glad to say is, most of you know me. You know, this has been all my life. I spent, let's see, 16 years on two different universities over, eight years on K through 12 here. The most frustrating thing to me over that 24-year term is to see us continue to talk about preschool or K through 3 education. And we can't afford to talk in the room. Now it's time for us to, and Commissioner Pressley was right. You know, we can't, you know, you see all politicians step up to the plate when they run for election and talk about education. But it disappears into four years later, two years later. But a lot of us have lived and we're going to continue to fight for it. But my concern is, and that's why I'm glad to see all of us here in the room, because in Buncombe County, if we can't control, let's get something done. And I feel confident that we will and within the county. Because if we don't do it, nobody's going to do it for us. And thanks for coming out.
Steph will be going through the ideas and continuing conversations with partners over the board. What are some things we can do right away? What are some things that we think we can implement this year? So please contact me as a liaison anytime to reach anyone in the county. And go to the Board of Commissioners website for phone numbers or email addresses for any of the members of this elected board. We can, we extended this invitation. We're thankful for the board for setting this stage today. And to be continued, right? Thank you.
Thank you.